This we go through.
Good afternoon. We do have a quorum present, and I'd like to declare the September 6, 2016, meeting of the Board of Education to order. And we have a very special guest with us today. We have Jeffrey Martinez, fifth grade student at Hickory Elementary School. And Jeffrey, if you'd come up to the mic and help lead us in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So Jeffrey, I think you have a couple guests with you today. Would you introduce them?
This is my principal, Mrs. Kona, and Van.
Is the mic on? Speak up. Let me see if the mic's on for you, Jeffrey.
Mrs. Kona and Mrs. Van.
Okay, I think it is. Just speak a little bit. Use your outdoor voice, okay? Okay. So what do you think of the first, what are we in, two and a half weeks of school? What do you think of the first two and a half weeks?
They're good.
Anything in particular you like this year?
Math.
Okay. How's recess?
Good.
Okay, excellent. Do you have any pets at home, any brothers or sisters?
I have a little brother, a big sister, and my mom and dad.
Excellent. Any pets?
No.
No. Okay. What would you like us to know about you?
I help people, like my teacher, and I'm teaching them Spanish.
Excellent.
Like how to say line up, when I go to get something to drink, lining up in line order, like more things like that.
Excellent. And your classmates probably appreciate that as well, don't they?
Yes.
Very good. Okay. Any other words of wisdom for us?
No.
We need all the help we can get some days.
Okay.
Thank you so much for joining us.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Okay. That brings us to the approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the agenda as proposed by the Agenda Planning Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Any questions or comments on the proposed agenda?
Yes, Madam President. I move to have the Agenda Planning Committee schedule some updates, workshops, business meeting reports, whatever format is the most appropriate, to keep the board apprised of the developments of the Commission on Innovation and Excellence and the Commission on the Twenty-First Century Facilities as they occur. I wish to make this proposal during Agenda Planning Committee so that we can keep up with the many changes that seem to be happening in Annapolis, especially around construction of facilities and also of the reauthorization of Thornton.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Could I make a friendly suggestion? Since we're approving the existing agenda as it is under this action, could we discuss that under future agenda items under miscellaneous business? Would that be--
But I just thought you wanted--
Would that be appropriate?
I think she--
Okay, I'm sorry.
I think she wants to--
Okay, am I missing? Go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure it got on the--
On that.
Or the--
Under the future agenda?
Right.
Perfect. All right.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Everyone understand the amendment Mrs. Fisher made, so we'll have that discussion under the future agenda item. Does that work, Mrs. Fisher?
Yes, thank you very much.
All those in favor? Five zero, and student concurs. Thank you. So now we need a vote on the amended agenda. All those in favor? Five zero, and student concurs. Thank you. We now have the approval of the minutes.
Yes, Madam President, I move for approval of the minutes for the closed session held the morning of Tuesday, August 23, 2016.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Any discussion on the first set of minutes? All those in favor? Five zero, abstention, student abstains. Next set.
Madam President, I move for approval of the minutes of the afternoon closed session held on Tuesday, August 23, 2016.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the second set of minutes? All those in favor? Five, abstention. Thank you. And final, I think?
Madam President, I move for approval of the minutes of the business meeting held on Tuesday, August 23, 2016.
In a second.
A second?
Thank you. Discussion on the final set of minutes. All those in favor? Five zero, and student concurs with the majority. Thank you. That brings us to public comments. We have two, we have a group signed up, and then we have, well, actually, we have two groups signed up. Thank you. First, we have Elizabeth Light, President of the Maryland PTA. If you'd come forward, please. Please introduce your guest with you, and you have five minutes to address the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks.
With your indulgence, I'm going to hope that my voice holds out. Otherwise, we will let our board members of Maryland PTA continue with the discussion.
Thank you.
I'll ask if they introduce themselves.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Michael Sedgwick. I'm the current Policies and Precedences Chair for Maryland State PTA.
Hi, my name's Tracy Tatum. I am the PTA Council Frederick County President.
Thank you very much for allowing us to speak today on behalf of Maryland PTA with regard to your proposed change in your fundraising policy. My name is Elizabeth L. Light, and I'm a volunteer who serves as President of Maryland PTA, the Maryland Congress of Parents and Teachers. I appear before you today on behalf of 160,000 members across the state who advocate for children all across the state every day. Maryland PTA is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit association committed to the advancement of educational excellence for all students across the state. Maryland PTA's members volunteer thousands of hours every week for their schools and for the children across the state. We applaud WCPS for recognizing that parent, community, and other stakeholders are essential parts of the decision-making process as recently defined in ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, which says that education agencies are to meaningfully consult with parents, community, partners, and other organizations or partners with relevant and organizational expertise. We believe that Maryland PTA and our local units represent this criteria. Maryland PTA supports activities and organizations within the state involving parents and community stakeholders for public input for education. One of the things that we support are eliminating the use of portable structures, maintaining adequate and safe and up-to-date school buildings and grounds regardless of the age of the building, including effective security measures in all school buildings, ensuring that school facilities meet the needs of each enrolled student and serves each community, and that we have career and technology education available for all students. Given that the school needs of Washington County and across the state are important, you will notice that the one thing I did not mention was fundraising. That's because Maryland PTA and our local units are advocates across the state. We advocate on the state, federal, and local level. We have a requirement in PTA that we call three-for-one, which means that for every three educational or instructional programs, we have one fundraising program. That way, we can feature at the very most important issues for our parents to include them in every school activity. The proposed changes to the policies and fundraising currently under consideration are a concern to Maryland PTA. Because our charter is from national PTA, all state PTAs and congresses, and all local units chartered by Maryland PTAs must comply with national PTA policies as well. It will have an impact that units will have to go to, potentially go to become community organizations as opposed to school-related organizations. We want to make sure that all our local PTAs remain 501(c)(3) units as they are created now, and they are consistent with Maryland nonprofit law. Currently, each local unit is established with a Board of Directors as required by the IRS and Maryland PTA, Maryland nonprofit law. Each one of those Boards of Directors has on its board not only the local volunteers but also principals and teachers. In that way, your policy would be inconsistent with Maryland PTA and Maryland nonprofit law, because the PTA would, instead of having the principal be a part of the governing body of the PTA, would be reporting to the principal instead. We find that that is something that we would appreciate. You're looking into and making more consistent with IRS Code 501(c)(3) and Maryland nonprofit law. Also, with me are two Maryland Board of Director members who can discuss some of the financial and program requirements that all local units must comply with. You have copies of some of the training that we have for Maryland PTA, especially for treasurers and principals. But I do want to let you know that with all the requirements that Maryland PTA imposes on our local units, we also have a compliance element. So if they do not maintain their standards of continuing affiliation for Maryland PTA and for national PTA, our staff of three full-time employees at Maryland PTA remind them and remind the council presidents that those matters have to be complied with. In addition, they also make phone calls and send emails to remind all the local units that they are missing documents such as the information regarding the local presidents, the audits, the standards of affiliation, and the budgets. I'll then let Mr. Sedgwick continue on additional policies that are required under Maryland PTA.
Yes. A local unit must meet the following standards of affiliation, which include adhere to the purpose and basic policy of national Maryland PTA, remit national and state dues to Maryland PTA office due dates, which is, must be submitted by March 31 of the calendar year, have bylaws approved every three years according to procedures of Maryland PTA, have a minimum of 25 members, shall submit the names and contact information, including phone numbers, address, and emails of all elected officers of the local unit, remit bonding and liability directors and officers, insurance premiums by the designated date, have an EIN number from the Internal Revenue Service on file with Maryland PTA, maintain status as a corporation having required by Maryland nonprofit law at a minimum president, secretary, and treasurer. Also, file appropriate tax forms by the designated required dates with IRS submits a copy to Maryland PTA office within 30 days of filing. And finally, each local PTA shall submit a copy of the annual financial review to Maryland PTA within 120 days following the end of the fiscal year.
I'd like Tracy Tatum to give you an idea of what the local council presidents do to help maintain the local PTAs' compliance.
Well, I can tell you what we do in Frederick. Frederick County is a rich environment of wonderful and creative volunteers, but we can't do without the business side of PTA, because the bottom line is, it is a business. It's a business that supports the education and programs that our children so direly need in the schools at this time. So what I do is, every month, I get a brand-new report that tells me all my, all the PTAs in my county, and what documents are they missing? Did they file their insurance? Are they doing this? And I reach out as a support system to say, hi, I see you didn't file your tax forms. Can I help you with that? Is there a problem going on? And I try to come at it as more of a, I'm here to support you, and I will drive down, and we will sit down and do your tax forms, because I understand that doing a 990 and submitting it by November 15 is not fun when Thanksgiving is right around the corner and you have 50 people coming to dinner. Okay? So then, as soon as you get done with that, then on December 30, you have to put in your Maryland charitables. And so it is a lot of work for these PTAs to stay compliant, but if they do it well and stay on schedule, which we do provide them with a schedule for all their forms and all their job duties and everything else like that, it is manageable. Very, very manageable.
Thank you. We'd be happy to entertain any questions you have.
We appreciate you being here today, and I know our Policy Committee made notes, and we do have, I believe everyone received the folder that you gave, the binder, and that'll all be taken into consideration. So thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Ann Marie Hines and Renee Young. Or just Ann Marie?
Just me.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Members of the Board of Education and Dr. Wilcox, thank you for allowing me to address you today. My name is Ann Marie Hines, and today I'm speaking on behalf of the Washington County Educational Support Personnel Association. We represent almost 500 support staff employees in Washington County. This includes our clerical, paraprofessional, transportation, custodial, maintenance, classroom assistant, nursing, and food service staff. As we began this new school year, we realized it had been a few years since we updated the logo that represents WCESP. As we began talking about who we could find to help us design a new logo for our organization, we quickly realized the most talented members of our community who could help us in this effort are our students. So today, we would like to announce the kickoff of a scholarship contest open to all high school students currently enrolled in WCPS to design a new logo for WCESP. The winning student will be awarded a $500 scholarship from our organization. The winning submission will then be used on all of our future materials, our letterhead, and a sign at our new office. We have already begun working closely with CES staff to advertise this contest at each of our high schools. The response we have initially received has been very enthusiastic, and we're very excited about the contest. All submissions must be submitted to us by December 2, 2016, and during the December 20 school board meeting, we hope to return to reward the scholarship to the student. Thank you very much for partnering with us on this effort, and we want to thank all students in advance who may choose to participate. We very much look forward to seeing what creative ideas they have for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate bringing that forward and the work you're doing on this.
Thank you.
Okay. That comes to the end of the list I have of those signed up. Is there anyone here who would like to come forward and address the board? Yes, ma'am. You have five minutes, and if you would introduce yourself, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ellen Knoll.
I'm Melissa Cottrell.
And I don't have any prepared remarks, so this is really going to be off the top of my head.
That works.
Hope it doesn't get me in trouble. First of all, I just, I don't know if you guys were aware, but the link to the updated September 2 changes does not work, so I was unable to preview the changes to the fundraising policy changes. So just really quick, from my perspective, I just want to say that without the changes, the system worked. The system that we have in place caught somebody who did something terribly wrong. It prosecuted her, and it now is going to get restitution to make the organization whole. So while it takes time, it worked. So please keep that in mind. The other thing I want to say, oh, by the way, it was the organization's responsibility, their financial fiduciary responsibility for due diligence, and they weren't doing their part, and I'm sure they have learned from that. You can't just trust one person and go forward. You have to, you have to pay attention. And I'm sure that's in their bylaws. I still see, just from sitting here, that the word "activity" is still defined as something that the principal can define, and that would lead to micromanaging. If I want to have an ice cream social as a booster for our kids, I shouldn't have to go through a principal after practice, but technically, I have to, because it's an activity. So I would like a better explanation of activity so that we're not micromanaged out of business. And at the end of the day, I am short-winded, because I rushed over here again, because, again, I'm a mom, I'm a parent, I'm a voter, and I have a million things to do. I came from somewhere to get over here to be a part of this, and don't make it harder on us, please. We're tired. There's only so many people that will come up and volunteer, and if you make it so strenuous that some innocent volunteer is going to innocently do something wrong because there's so many rules and regulations, it's going to be that much harder to get them to help them. And at the end of the day, this is about our kids. This is about fundraising to support our kids in their education. You guys have a limited fund, okay? We understand that, but don't hurt us in our ability to make up the difference. Thank you.
Melissa, you wanted to say a few things.
Yes, ma'am. Mine is in reference to the gaming issue with the raffles that take place at school. We had discussed last Tuesday. I actually called the county gaming commission, and then I called the state gaming commission, and I also called the Department, the Secretary of State, as well as the Department of Education, and spoke to everyone there, and there is no definition that raffles are gambling at all, even if they take place on school property. And I actually found on your website last night, under healthy fundraising, you actually have a list of what healthy fundraising ours, excuse me, are, and one of them, or two of them, are raffles, which include movie passes and theme bags, and then it says "raffles", and then in parentheses, "teachers do a silly activity." My question is, is I don't understand what the problem is with raffles taking place at school. At Williamsport High School, the Coral Department, we do basket raffles at every musical performance, and also at our cabaret in February, and we bring in anywhere between $800 and $1,200. And that is a very large amount of money for our program, because we don't have that. In regards to regular fundraising, our parents can't afford it, to be perfectly honest. We're a smaller school. We have lower-income families, and they honestly cannot afford to have, to pay for our candy apple fundraiser that's getting ready to start. And then 30 days later, we have a Yankee Candle fundraiser, and then as soon as we get back from Christmas vacation, we have a popcorn fundraiser. They are back-to-back, and they don't stop, and the cheapest thing is $5. But $5 from one person is not going to add up to the $1,000 that we would get from the basket raffles. And I mean, we honestly, we need the money, because our program is getting bigger, and it is costing us thousands of dollars just to buy new dresses and tuxedos for our students. And the Coral Department does not have that extra money, because we just don't bring it in with our fundraisers. They do not very well, actually. I guess that's, that's pretty much it. I just wanted to bring up with the fundraiser.
Thank you. And I know both of you shared at the Policy Committee as well, so thank you so much.
And thank you for the opportunity to hear us.
Appreciate it. Sorry you had to rush over here.
I'm always rushing. For kids.
Okay. Anyone else who would like to come forward? There is a next section on our agenda for Board Member Response to these public comments. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Light and company for coming all the way up here to share not only their comments but the packet with us. As Chair of the Policy Committee, we will be continuing to do some work on this. We are supposed to have our first read today, but we do have a time period for additional comments, and we will be meeting again to work on this. So thank you very much for your input. We really appreciate it. Also, to the two ladies that just spoke, Ms. Knoll, we have defined activity. It probably did not get on the website yet, because it needs to be voted on, and we will be looking further into the raffle definition at our next meeting, which is September 20 at noon time. Thank you for coming and using your valuable time and sharing, and we're trying to get it right. We really are. So thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. And the first one, what a surprise, the consideration of the first reading of the fundraising in school-sponsored activities. Mr. Trotta?
Thank you. Good afternoon. The Washington County Board of Education's Policy Committee has undertaken a comprehensive review of policies I G D F and J L A, both of which are entitled fundraising in school-sponsored activities. The Policy Committee has conducted nine public meetings to discuss the proposed new policy and the existing policies. I will provide an overview of the Policy Committee's work, which will include its outreach to the school community, a brief description of the new policy, and four new exhibits, the proposed effective date of the policy, the costs associated with the-- the proposed effective date of the policy, the costs associated with implementing the new policy, the Policy Committee's specific recommendations, and the schedule going forward. Moving to the community outreach, the Policy Committee's public meetings have been well-attended, and members of the community have been offered an opportunity, and they have offered comments during those, those public meetings. On July 14th of this year, a letter was sent to all school principals and to 45 different types of organizations, including parent-teacher association, parent-teacher organizations, and booster organizations regarding the proposed new policy. Additionally, periodic reports have been posted online for the community to consider, and we placed at the back of the room some additional copies of the latest draft of the proposed policy, and we certainly will check on the posting, the most recent posting. Thus far, the Policy Committee has received written comments from five members of the community. The Policy Committee has considered all those comments, and in most cases, the wording of the policy has been modified to address the comments that were offered. I next would like to provide a brief description of the policy. It is known as Policy KB. It is entitled "School Activities, Programs, Indoor Fundraisers Sponsored by School-Based Organizations, Parent Organizations, and Booster Clubs." The policy sets forth a purpose and background clause, and also defines certain key terms, such as booster club, parent organization, and school-based organizations, which are those that you would typically think of at a school level where a teacher might be sponsoring activity in close concert with the school principal. The policy sets forth financial standards these organizations must adhere to, and certain requirements when they engage in fundraising activities. The Policy Committee thought it would be helpful to include exhibits to the policy. The first is entitled "Activity, Program, or Fundraising Form." This is a form that advises the school principal of a proposed fundraising activity and allows the principal to approve that activity. The second form is an authorization for the parent organization or booster club to engage in a fundraising activity or program on behalf of the school system. Excuse me. The third form that is attached is a set of financial forms that are intended to serve as a guide to organizations that they might refer to in completing certain reports. And finally, the fourth form attached to it is referred to as "Agreed Upon Procedures." On Page 5, Article 4, Section C3D of the proposed policy, "In a year in which an organization's annual income or total deposits in any type of account exceeds $100,000, it is required to submit a financial report, which is to be done in accordance with these agreed-upon, in accordance with agreed-upon procedures." And that, as I've indicated, appears in Exhibit Number 4. I next would like to talk about the effective dates. The Policy Committee wanted to make sure that the various organizations had time to meet the requirements of the new policy. The new policy, if adopted, would take effect January 14th, 2017. Based on a comment offered by a member of the community, there is a section that concerns bylaws. The organizations would not be required to update their bylaws until June 30th, 2017. With regard to the cost of the implementation of this particular policy, we've consulted with the Finance Office. There really would only be a limited number of organizations that would be required to file an Agreed Upon Procedures report based on the $100,000 threshold. They estimate the cost would be about $3,000 per year based on the expected number of reports. I next would like to move to the specific recommendations of the Policy Committee. The first is to rescind existing policy IGDF. The next is to rescind existing policy JLA. The next is to adopt new policy KB. And finally, they are recommending that you adopt the four exhibits to the new proposed policy. I next wanted to share the schedule with you going forward. On September 20th at 12 o'clock, from 12 o'clock to 1:30, the Policy Committee will be meeting in the Board Office to consider additional comments, and that includes the comments we received today from the Maryland PTA Association. September 26th has been established as the date for the opportunity for a public comment ending. On September 27th, the Policy Committee will be meeting from 9 o'clock to 10:30, once again in the Board Conference Room, to consider this policy, should it be scheduled for a second reading. The second reading is scheduled for October 4th. That'll be a public business meeting. In closing, I'd like to acknowledge the assistance of various staff members who were very helpful in placing this policy in its final form and offering other technical assistance. I want to thank Rick Akers, Chris South, David Brandenburg, Will Kaufman, Robert Rollins, and Jamie Brown. Thank you.
Thank you. This is an action item. I will need a motion.
Madam President, I will read off the motions. I have been advised we should separate these into seven different motions.
Rather than a consent agenda, will Mr. Trotta?
Another option is to accept the recommendations of the Policy Committee, which I just provided. I'd certainly would go through that again if that would be helpful.
I'll defer to you, Mrs. Fisher as Chair. Unless my colleagues disagree, I think this could be done as an entire one motion, or recommend, or to Mr. Trotta's, a motion could read that we're voting on accepting the recommendation of the Policy Committee.
Okay. I can certainly do that. And I move to have the Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee concerning policies IGDF and JLA, as well as policy KB, and the four exhibits, KBE1, KBE2, KBE3, and KBE4.
Is there a second?
Second.
So discussion is on the floor. I would suggest that, and Mrs. Williams, if anyone feels uncomfortable voting on this in its entirety, certainly you're welcome to pull one item out or more, and we can separate that out. Mrs. Williams?
Yes. Included in that recommendation is the rescission of the existing policy included in that.
Would you like to speak to it, Mrs. Fisher? I know you have at the last few meetings. I don't know if you'd like to summarize, but it's already been.
Other than working on an ad hoc charter committee, this is the longest, I think, we have ever worked on one particular policy. We absolutely appreciate the work of the many groups throughout the school system who work so hard to provide all sorts of things, programs, uniforms, various opportunities for our students, and we're not really trying to hinder them. I know it, the policy does call for some additional paperwork beyond what they have been doing, but we're trying to hit a good balance between being very watchful, making sure that we're protecting the leaders of those groups, the groups themselves, as well as the school system, as far as liabilities, as well as trying to help make all the various forms and so on, especially with the exhibits, understandable, and as easy as possible to complete. So again, there is still time for recommendations, questions, suggestions. Between now and the 26th of September, we will be continuing to work on this, and I just, just hope that we can, that these various groups can understand what we're trying to do.
Mrs. Williams? You look like you're ready.
I do. I have a question for Mr. Trotta, and realizing that our policy has gone from, or will go possibly, from one page to seven pages, and one of the items that was in the original policy, or is in the original policy, that would continue into the new, is with regard to the raffles that Mrs. Cordell spoke to. And my question, Mr. Trotta, and it's on Page 3 of 7.
Yes.
B2, B2B. It says, "No student is to sell tickets for raffles or lotteries sponsored by school organizations." Could it be that this, and I know it would be difficult to say what the intention was of, since this was done back in the '70s, that it wasn't, the intent perhaps was not to eliminate raffles or lotteries from the list of possible fundraisers, but to not have students involved in the selling of tickets, to make it strictly an adult? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
And is there a difference?
Yeah. I had an opportunity to confer with, with Rick Akers. He's very familiar with the day-to-day operations at the school level, and that's always been a requirement, that there not be raffles, that students not be involved in selling raffle tickets. So that's been a longstanding policy. He did indicate to me that he is aware that raffles do take place at, on school grounds, and the policy, the proposed policy at this point only speaks to school grounds and says there should not be raffles. And we've reached out to the Maryland, to the Washington County Gaming Commission. I received a communication this morning from Mr. Hubbs that I'll share with you. His organization does not, they're not responsible for raffles, so he did not express an opinion as to whether that was a permitted or not a permitted practice. So we're going to do some further review of that particular issue, and I think probably the best entity to consult with, if we can find a point of contact, is the Attorney General's Office to determine what's allowable and what's not. The policy, the policy as currently drafted has no bearing on what a, any organization would do when it's off school grounds, so they can engage in whatever fundraising activity that's in accordance with the law, but we will reexamine that issue.
Tom.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ridenhour.
Pardon me, Tony. I apologize, Mr. Trotta. I'm confused because, you know, I'm reading 2B, and that's not at all what I'm seeing. It says, "No student is to sell tickets for raffles or lotteries sponsored by school-based organizations." It doesn't say that there should be no raffle. It flat-out says, "No student shall sell tickets." Doesn't say, "No person shall sell tickets." And I understand particularly where the individual was speaking, the young lady was speaking about the basket raffles, because I've seen those and bought tickets for those on numerous occasions. And those organizations, that's a big deal. I mean, $1,000, $10,000, whatever the case might be, coral groups, band boosters, some athletic organizations. It takes big money. If you put on a show, you put on a show, you're going to pay, even for older shows, you're going to pay $10,000 in fees just to put the show on, and newer shows are significantly higher than that. So, you know, that type of, that type of activity, you know, I have no problem with it saying, "No student is to sell," but if the interpretation is, "No raffles," I've got a big problem with that. So I don't know if that means we have to change the verbiage, or be specific to, somehow be specific to that, because I can't vote for 2B, because I understand the implications of, of losing out on the big-ticket fundraising activities.
Mr. Ridenhour, this is the first read?
I understand it's the first read. I understand.
So we're looking.
I will vote for a first read, but because I want to hear more.
Perfect.
Of what the public has to say, but I also want the, the committee to understand my perspective, and my perspective is, I don't like 2B. I think that's the simple explanation, for a variety of reasons, Mr. Trotta.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I think that the prior speaker was referring to the new language on Page 6. If you're at the top of Page 6, Subparagraph B, the last sentence, "The fundraiser may not involve any type of gambling," and then it has in parentheses, "raffle sales Las Vegas night." So I think the prior speaker was expressing concerns about that, and we've been seeking clarification on what's permissible and what's not. So we're still on that path.
It's, we're trying to define gambling, and is it a game of chance, and is raffling, raffles, a game of chance?
Well, it is a game of chance. Of course it is. But I still don't like it. I don't like that segment. I think that, you know, it's an opportunity in a short period of time for our organizations who require outside funding, you know, to raise some money. If they don't, then you're looking at raising ticket prices about 70%. And that's, you know, then it becomes a catch-22. You raise your ticket prices, you get less people, so you have to raise your ticket prices again, and again, and again. So, you know, that type of short-term ability to, to raise money, I can't, I wouldn't be able to support that.
Mrs. Fisher?
I just want to say that we understand that, and we have talked about that topic with the individuals that have attended the, the committee meetings over the last, probably the last month or so. I think Mr. Tona is concerned about legality and making sure we get a good definition as to whether raffle is considered actual gambling before we make a final decision about the We certainly don't want to cut off the various methods that the groups have of raising funds. I just think we're trying to make sure that, that we're not breaking any laws anywhere. And he said he's going to contact the Attorney General as kind of the final say on the matter.
I understand. Be careful what you wish for sometimes.
Dr. Wilcox?
Well, first, let me say that I've resisted the temptation to weigh in on this for 11 months now or however, but I do want to say a couple of things.
That long?
However long it's, it feels like forever.
It does.
But, first thing is, I've participated in some of these raffles, at Williamsport in particular, and I've been cursed I haven't won, but I've never viewed it as gambling. I always viewed it as a donation to the organization. I put my money in the hat, and I will tell you that more often than not, at least at Williamsport, what ends up happening is that the winners put the money right back into the pot.
Yep.
And so it's a win-win for the organization, and so I hope we don't lose sight of the intent of these folks who are working for our kids. I do understand the legalities, but to Mr. Ridenhour's point, sometimes be careful what you wish for. I think one of the first things they teach you is, you don't, in law school, is you don't ask a question you don't know the answer to, or at least believe you know the answer to. So if we, if we somehow come across the definition that this is gambling, you're going to have a lot of people who are really dissatisfied with this Board's action. And quite honestly, I think we've got to ask a threshold question of, what harm do these things do when they're done by our parent-teacher organizations? That said, I do have some concern with the accounting for this fundraising, and I think we probably do have to find some more common ground, because quite honestly, to say that the system worked isn't necessarily true. The reason the system worked is because a PTO, after expending about $20,000, realized that they had no money. And so $20,000 worth of fundraising went by the wayside. And so $20,000 worth of fundraising went by the wayside. And now we have someone who probably is not in the best financial position to repay that money, even though restitution has been ordered. So I think we have to think carefully about, are there some midpoints that we can check without becoming so burdensome that we discourage volunteers? So I think, I hope the committee will do that. My biggest concern with all of this is student safety. And I certainly want to go on record as saying that I think we have to have policies and practices which guarantee the safety of our young people. And quite honestly, what drove this home for me was not too long ago in the Williamsport community where a young student was in the company of another student and an adult, and went to a door, and the person answered with a gun in hand. It was reported to the police. It was followed up on. There were some extenuating circumstances. I understand that. But for a second, we had high school kids who were in jeopardy. Because had the person not been a rational-thinking person who answered the door, a tragedy could have existed right in our midst. So I'm not sure that I want kids going door-to-door anymore, even high school kids. On the other hand, I think it's important to get young people involved in civic engagement. And I believe that young people who will participate in something like this, in a controlled environment, are going to be more likely to be volunteers later on in their life. And they will know how to do it. So as the superintendent, I'm saying there are grave concerns here. And I certainly don't think you make policy based on one bad experience. But I do think that you have to take caution when you have that kind of experience. And you need to make sure that you at least take sensible precautions to keep your kids safe. And so with that, I leave those comments with the board's committee. And I'm hopeful that you'll move this forward so we can have a deeper and longer discussion, which I promise to actually be engaged in at least the regulation phase, if not the policy crafting itself. So thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Dr. Harding?
Yes, I have a number. I'll weigh in on where I am on raffles. I don't see raffles as gambling. I mean, when I was in high school, Catholic high school, so a little different than this situation, but all 1,300 kids in my high school were asked to go out and sell so many raffle tickets in order to raise money for the school. And they would draw a number out, and the winner would get, you know, $5,000 or something. I didn't think I was engaged in a gambling activity. I just didn't. I understand others may disagree, but I don't see it as gambling, particularly pumpkin, or basket bingo and pumpkin bingo. I mean, that just, I sort of feel like the Supreme Court, when asked about their definition of pornography, you know, I know it when I see it. When I see basket bingo, I don't see gambling. I just don't. So anyway, that's, that's my point of view on that. A few other things. Another thing that drove some of this, just for people's background, I think, is we have had groups of people out there engage in fundraising activities claiming it was for a school or for a booster club that had nothing to do with any booster club, any school, or Washington County public schools. So the questions about approving fundraisers, some of it drives from that. And we think it's, or at least I think it's not fair to the, not good stewardship to the taxpayers and to the other people who are legitimately engaged in fundraising activities, to have them competing in the public with other people who are using the names of our schools to try to raise money for other purposes. So that's some of what at least motivates me to want to say, we need to put a little more structure around who's raising what funds, for what purposes, and for when? And what names are they using when they're promoting their organizations? So I provide that as a little bit of background as well, at least from, from my approach to this question. A few, a few more specific things. Paragraph four A, three E. Three E, that reads, this is in the section regarding standards that apply to school-based organizations, parent organizations, and booster clubs. Section three says, "The following safeguards regarding donation-based crowdfunding and crowdsourcing are to be followed." E says, "All funds and/or items provided are the property of the school that coordinated the fundraising activity." Do you mean the organization that coordinated the fundraising activity? Because if a booster club goes and does some crowdsourcing or raises money this way, you're saying that money belongs to the school, not the booster club?
That's, that's the way it's worded. Yes, that is correct.
Is that what, is that what you intend? Because I think if, if a drama booster group wants to raise funds that way, if they raise the funds, it should belong to that group. It shouldn't belong to the school. Otherwise, the school should be raising the money.
That's something...
Am I missing something?
No, the wording indicates that all organizations, it's, you could put the organizations under three separate categories. One is the school-based organization, which that would be.
Right.
That's sponsored entirely by the school system. Then you have your parent organizations and booster clubs. That's certainly something that the policy committee can consider at its next meeting.
Could I speak to that a moment? I know during the discussion, crowdfunding and crowdsourcing was something that came to the table a little bit later in our discussion. And some of the concern was whether individuals within a school, someone not representing an organization, but would go out and crowdfund for something within that school community, and who actually owned, who had the right to those dollars. So I think we need to work on the wording so we don't certainly disenfranchise organizations. But there was some concern about individuals doing this for themselves, or say, you know, a we, you know, for a certain group, and saying, "I need money to send my son or daughter to something." How do we feel about that?
I think we need to separate that out. Because I think honestly, the genesis of that was we had a number of teachers who were setting up GoFundMe accounts to fund their classrooms. And with, I think that's how it found its way to the policy committee, which is different than, say, a parent at Bispa who says, "I want my daughter to go to Orlando. I'm going to set up a GoFundMe for my daughter." Because they couldn't get money, say, from the foundation or through traditional channels. So, and I don't think we can control that. But I think we need to think about what our employees do. But that's probably separate than this policy. And I think that might just be because we're relatively new
To that sort of...
to crowdsourcing, crowdfunding. So I think we just have to probably deal with that separately.
And maybe that could be defined under regulations as well. Does that answer or help, sort of?
It helps. It seems to me that, that the context helps. But I think we just need to make sure the language is clear so that if a booster club does the crowdfunding, that doesn't go into the school's treasury.
Right. I think absolutely, because, I mean, the way that this works for us, if, if a booster club wants to fund a student, student participation in an activity, that's one thing. On the other hand, if a booster club wants to buy property for the student athletes to use, for example, they want to buy a new weight station in the training room, that becomes the property of the school district. But the money should never be our property. That's a gift that the, that the foundation makes to us. It would be the same thing as if the Barbara Ingram Foundation, of which I'm an ex-official board member. If that group wanted to buy a new, put in a new dance floor, it would not be the property of the foundations. The dance floor would be a gift to the school district. And we receive those gifts on a regular basis. So I just think we have to probably separate this out in the policy and be a little clearer. Because the money should stay with the grape that raised it. And when they make a conscious decision to buy something for the system,
Then?
Then, then if it's something tangible, we will own it. They will know that through the gifting process. But if they're giving something to an individual student or something, that's just a service that they're providing. And I think we should let that go.
Okay. That helps. Paragraph C for C. This is regarding, if an employee is an officer of a parent organization or booster club, he/she may not participate in a vote that would benefit him or her. I understand what we're trying to get at here. I just want to be sure that if, if an employee, say, is a teacher and is a member of the PTA, and the PTA wants to buy curtains for all the teachers' rooms, does that mean that that teacher has to step out of that discussion? Because while that teacher is one of 35 teachers who are going to get curtains, it would benefit him or her? Or is this, I mean, I, maybe that is what it's meant to prevent. I don't know.
I think it is meant to prevent that. However, I don't think you have, might not have the latest iteration of the policy. It goes on to say that if that vote is needed to complete a quorum, that that person can recuse themselves or abstain from...
Well, it says if, if the person's vote is needed to create a quorum, then the person can vote.
As long as they announce that they're...
As long as they announce the conflict, but...
I think...
I mean, it seems to me if, and we have an attorney, we have an ethics panel opinion and all kinds of other things, that say that board members who have spouses, who are teachers, can vote on contracts. I don't see why we can't have a teacher who's a PTA member vote on something that provides the general benefit of a school. That seems, just because they happen to be working in the school.
Yeah, I don't believe that, that was the intent. The example that was given was if the, if the parent organization, for instance, wanted to give each of the teachers a gift certificate, each, each teacher a gift certificate, that in those particular situations, since that person would do, would be a personal gain, not something that would benefit the school. So the policy committee certainly can look at that if they want to clarify that a little bit further. So it was not intended to say that that individual couldn't participate in an activity where it was something that benefited the school. It's really more of a, a private gain was the thought.
As long as we can make that clear. I mean, it's a parent-teacher, it's called the PTA for a reason. And it's not just the parents, it's the teachers too. And if we're going to cut half of them out because they're teachers, that, that sort of defeats the purpose. And I understand that's not your intention. I just want to make sure that the policy reflects that as well. Paragraph C for E. That says, what was it that grabbed me? Maybe I wrote down the wrong number there. There's someplace where it refers to expenditures being on a form, and I didn't see the expenditures on the form. I'll go back and look for it and see if I can find it. My notes are not, I guess, as good as they should be. So that's all I have. I will support the approval for the first read. And I hope that the committee will continue to look at the things that we've talked about and that some of our speakers have talked about, and continue to make this a document that'll both provide the protection, I think that, that the system needs, that the people who are raising the funds needs, and that the members of the public need, so.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's been an interesting few months on this. And we appreciate your comments, everyone's comments here. Certainly, we're struggling to find that balance, as Mrs. Fisher said.
Can I?
Yes. Did you find it?
I found it. So it is, it is C for E. And I will just read the first sentence of C for E. It says, "The school principal has the authority to void or cancel any and all fundraising activities or expenditure programs that he/she determines is inconsistent with the information provided on the fundraising approval form, KBE1." If I go to KBE1, there's nothing about an expenditure program on that form.
Do we have the wrong form listed?
Maybe it's the wrong form listed, but...
KBE1.
KBE1 just is the club, organization, what type of solicitation is, how's it going to be raised, vendor, location, et cetera. It doesn't say anything about expenditures. So I don't know if there's supposed to be a separate form regarding expenditures, or if there's supposed to be an expenditure line on the form, or...
Expenditure line, yeah. Good, good catch. Did you find that, Mr. Trotta?
I did.
You're good on that? Okay. Any other questions or comments on this discussion on the first read?
Yes, Ms. Ridenhour. I'm looking at B 3A on page three. "Insofar as possible, a fundraising activity or program is to be restricted to the school's immediate attendance area." Just wondering if you could explain or give a little background about this specific line? Mr. Trotta or Mrs. Fisher?
The only thing I can share, this is the original language that is in the current policy. And I'm...
That's an attempt to try to keep, for instance, say, Williamsport students going and selling things in South High's territory, and vice versa. Keeping it as fair as possible for each school area.
Like, the reason I asked the question is, with our class SGA, when we were fundraising for prom, the majority of our money came from restaurant fundraisers. And there aren't nearly as many chain restaurants in the North End that are willing to do the fundraisers like Chipotle does. There are like a lot of restaurants near the Valley Mall. So for us, I can tell you that that would definitely restrict a lot of the money that we would take in.
Well, I don't think you would need to restrict the restaurants. It's who you, if you were going to go around door-to-door, let's say, selling those tickets for the restaurant, you should only sell them in, in your case, North High's area.
The, the way it works is, like, we would advertise when the fundraiser is, like, through our Twitter page in school. But the restaurant is, like, out of our attendance area. And that, to me, is why I'm questioning it.
All right, the restaurant's out of the area. I think we need to clarify that, probably.
Okay.
Thank you. So that's...
Thank you.
The policy that keeps on giving. Any other questions? Dr. Wilcox?
I just say, once again, Jeff Stoffer comes out on top. He has students that go everywhere. So he can fundraise in Washington County. Just easy.
So if everyone feels like they've had a chance to weigh in, I will just close the discussion out with one clarification. I know we've set the second read for October 4th at this point. I will just say, and I'm not trying to get ahead of you, Mrs. Fisher as chair, but if we feel like we're getting a lot of comments and aren't having enough time to really respond, our policy allows for eight weeks between a first read and a second read. So I guess what I'm saying, if the need arises, we can certainly expand that time if we feel we need it. To be sure, we've captured as much feedback as possible on this. It's a big difference. Again, a policy that hasn't really been looked at since '77. So, all right. The, we have a motion on the first read. Going to ask for all of those who approve the first read to please signify. Five zero, and student concurs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to consideration of local and state CIP plan. Mr. Rollins, Dr. Michael. Who else do we have? Is that it? Welcome.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, President Breitman, members of the board, Dr. Wilcox. Today, we're seeking your approval of both the local and state CIP request. That need to be forward to hearing in the coming weeks. This slide and most of the slides, you have seen a little bit of information about in the past, that this whole document mirrors the EFMP, the Educational Facilities Master Plan, and the board approved in June. This is kind of the second part, the sister document to that. This is the money document for the educational master plan. There'll be a third document coming on October 4th, the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. That'll actually be another sister document to this document. Four things we always try to accomplish with the CIP. We're always looking at renovations, modernizations of schools. You'll see that with the Springfield, Western Heights, and Sharpsburg project. Identify and resolve seat capacity issues. Again, Sharpsburg is one of those projects that will take care of that. Address systemic needs, variety of HVAC, roof replacements, those types of projects. And then we always try to maximize the state allocation and minimize... And then we always try to maximize the state allocation and minimize these local contributions towards the CIP. As I said earlier, this information fully lines with the educational master plan. It reflects the current amount of money dedicated per square foot, including site prep for large project, in this case, Sharpsburg, coming up. Those numbers obviously could change if time changes between now and when we start the construction, or requests for funding approval of Sharpsburg or the other projects, or if something comes out of the new study that's going on. If they limit the amount per square foot, if they change the amount per student per square foot, you know, some of the, the dollar figures in this document could change. Right now, we enjoy 71%. So 71% of every dollar of eligible cost comes from the state, provided we provide the local match. And then the whole document is driven, not by us, but the document itself is driven by the public school construction folks. You'll see form numbers and things like that on the document, and staff does an excellent job, particularly Rob and Chad Chriswell and Mark, in following those, those requirements. Just very quickly, I'm going to run through the projects. Our first project, Sharpsburg Elementary, we're in a position right now from the state, we're asking for planning approval. That doesn't cost them anything to give us planning approval, although it does kind of send a signal to us, if they provide planning approval, it's, in the past, it's always been a signal that they're going to provide funding in later years. Locally, that'd be about $1.1 million. This is the kickoff of the architect and engineering work, some studies, some initial money for getting the project underway. You can see that the planning approval, again, from the state is zero, locally 1.1. The total project's about a $24 million project, and we anticipate the school opening in four years. We have Clear Spring Roof Replacement Project, approximately a million-dollar project. The split on that, $627,000 from the state, $337,000 from the local CIP. If I could back up to Sharpsburg for a minute, the 1 billion, 1.1 billion on Sharpsburg for architect and engineering services does reflect in last year's CIP from the county. The FY '17 CIP reflected their support for the Sharpsburg project. Right now, their FY, they, they run it out 10 years, they're not showing support for systemic projects, and FY '18 for right now. So the 337,000, we'd have to secure from the county or from other means at this point. The next project, Fountaindale Elementary School, a very large project, heating, ventilating, and air conditioning, HVAC project, approximately $3 million. Again, you can see the split, the state, 1.8, locally about 1.1. Again, those funding, that funding locally has not been identified. Switchgear at Northern Middle School, by the time this project's completed, the school will be approximately 40 years old. The switchgear there has had some failures, and also, there's issues with finding parts for the switchgear. State, about $150,000, locally approximately $90,000 towards that project. So just in summary, for the FY 2018, on the state side, there to the left under FY 2018, local planning for Sharpsburg, no cost to state, again, it's generally a signal, if they, if they give us local planning, that they're going to put support behind it financially in the future. Then you can see the three amounts we indicated earlier as far as state requests that would go in for FY '18. Locally, we included the urban education campus BOE component of $4 million. We were told at one point earlier in the summer that the money has already been approved in the CIP. We looked at past CIPs, we didn't see it. We saw no harm in adding that and including that in this document. If it's already been approved by the county commissioners, they'll just drop it from our request. If it hasn't been, and they choose to put it in FY '18 or some other place, at least we've officially asked. So that's why staff is recommending that we include it in our local ask officially. And then you can see the amounts, the 1.1 million that has been identified in the county CIP for architect and engineering services for Sharpsburg, and then the three numbers that I mentioned, in a total of about 1.5 million, that have not been identified so far. The remainder of the PowerPoint is a summary of out years, so in 2019, we really get into construction dollars of Sharpsburg, our systemic projects for FY '19. Likewise, in '20, more money towards Sharpsburg construction and systemic projects. Then finally, in 2021, the balance of Sharpsburg, both at state level and local level. Then we get into local planning, requests of the state for Western Heights. The 1.5 million would be for architect and engineering fees for Western Heights, and then again, additional systemic projects. Then we get into construction money for Western Heights, additional systemic projects, balance of Western Heights, local planning for Springfield, and systemic projects. And with that, we'll be glad to entertain any of your questions. We're requesting, again, approval, either as one motion or two motions, for local CIP and state CIP requests for FY '18. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, I would suggest we make it one motion, but I will leave that up to the person who chooses to make the motion. I think we've done this in one in the past, with one motion in the past. I don't see how we do one without the other, but if somebody can give me the logic, I'm happy to sever them.
You want approval of state and local CIP for FY 2018?
Thank you, Dr. Harding. Is a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Questions? Seeing none, we'll move forward for the approval. All those in favor? Five-zero, student concurs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us to FY 2018 budget calendar. It's hard to believe we're looking at a new budget cycle. Mr. South, welcome.
Good afternoon. In response to a requirement in Regulation DB-R, which the Board approved on November 6, 2008, I'm here to request your approval of the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget calendar. I'm sure each of you have had an opportunity to review the proposed calendar that was included in your packet over the weekend, and the members of the Finance Committee studied the calendar in detail at their last meeting last Tuesday. That committee is recommending that the calendar be approved as a general guideline for the development of the FY 2018 budget. Important dates in, in this calendar for the Board are as follows. First of all, January 23rd is the date that we are projecting to receive preliminary 2018 state aid calculation from the Maryland State Department of Education. As you know, that date is always a little bit flexible, depending upon the governor's budget when it's presented, and when MSDE has the resources to take the numbers from the governor's budget and craft them for the individual school systems. The rest of the budget after that date is really predicated on the receipt of those, those state aid calculations on the 23rd of January. We have incorporated three work sessions for the Board this year, as requested by the Board. Last year, we only had two in the budget. This year, we've added a third, and those, those work sessions are scheduled for the 31st of January, the 14th of February, Happy Valentine's Day, and the 7th of March. Also, there's been an additional meeting added for the Budget Advocacy and Review Committee, in case they need some additional time to review the budget before their presentation to the Board. The budget hearing is scheduled for the 28th of February, and the joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners for the Board's presentation to the Commissioners is scheduled at this time for either the 21st or the 28th of March. All that being said, I'd be glad to answer any questions, and I respectfully request your approval of this budget calendar.
Thank you, Mr. South. A motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the proposed FY 2018 budget calendar as a general guideline for development of the fiscal 2018 budget.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. A second?
Second.
Dr. Harding, is any questions on this recommended general guideline to our budget Seeing none? Oh, sorry. Yes.
I just like to make, pulling a Ridenhour here. I just want to make a comment about the use of the word guideline. We had an extensive discussion about this in the Finance Committee, just so that we're clear as a group going forward next year, that these are really, these dates are really intended to set the framework for developing the budget. The hope is that if, for some reason, one of the dates for the work session doesn't work, that it's not necessary to amend the budget calendar. I mean, the Board still has to publicly announce when the, when the meeting would be, it has to be advertised, have to have a quorum, have to approve the agenda, all the other things that are normally in place are in place. So it just, I think it would help make things a little smoother in their flow if, if we understand that this is to guide the process, rather than being a straitjacket in terms of exactly what happens on exactly which dates, so.
Thank you, absolutely. Good clarity. Any other questions before I call the vote? Okay, all those in favor? Five-zero, student concurs. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to number four, consideration of the Maryland Association of Boards of Education nominations for committee assignments. We have a list that I will read out to everyone. The budget, and just to give some background, these are standing committees for MAB, and the interest is, or the importance of this, is to have a voice from each of our school districts, downstate, at MAB, and also with the organizational aspects of, and legislative of MAB, and it's to be sure that Washington County is part of that voice. So we have, budget and planning would be Dr. Harding's. Legislative would be Mrs. Brightman, with Mr. Ridenhour as alternate. Conference program would be Mrs. Williams. Nominating would be Mr. Ridenhour. Resolutions would be Mrs. Williams. And the MAB awards would be Mrs. Fisher. That leaves us with one opening, which is the Federal Relations Network, if anyone is willing to take that on. I know that MAB's going to try to combine the same day of the legislative with the federal relations, so maybe Mr. Ridenhour and I can sort of tag-team that one a little bit, if possible. So that is the, the slate I'm putting forward. Any additions? Anyone unwilling to serve? Okay, I would consider a motion on that slate as presented.
Move to accept the nominations as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five-zero, student concurs. Thank you. So that brings us to our final action item, consideration of letter of intent to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the University System of Maryland at Hagerstown, subject to certain requirements. Mr. Trotta and Dr. Michael? Welcome.
Good afternoon. We'd like to provide you with some background information. During the joint.
Is your mic on for some reason?
I'll try again.
You just have to speak in, but Tony, not beside it.
Okay.
They're unidirectional, I'm sorry.
During the, the joint public meeting between the Board of Education and the County Commissioners that was conducted on August 23rd, the Board was requested to provide a letter of intent concerning a sublease for the property known as 55-59 South Washington Street. We have provided the members of the Board and the superintendent with a proposed letter of intent for your consideration. We're glad to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion, please?
Madam President, I move that the Board, it'll be a long motion.
Oh, dear.
That the Board authorize the superintendent to sign a letter of intent on its behalf, that that letter include everything on page one of two of the draft letter intent, letter of intent provided by staff, up through the heading, "Letter of Intent." After that, strike everything and substitute in its place the following language. "The Washington County Board of Education offers this letter of intent to facilitate the construction of and possible sublease of USMH facilities designed to provide education spaces to teach science and other academic classes and dining services for Washington County Public Schools. This letter of intent serves as the school board's desire to lease, sublease facilities for classroom use and dining services at 55 to 59 West Washington Street, provided USMH meets the following conditions. One, the classrooms are designed and constructed in a manner consistent with school board program of studies, program needs, and best practices as identified by Washington County Public Schools instructional facilities and operations staff. Two, the parties reach agreement that are mutually agreeable on the terms and conditions of a lease/sublease. New paragraph, this letter of intent shall be binding on all parties and demonstrate Washington County Public, Washington County Board of Education's good faith in reaching an executed lease/sublease in a timely manner, which upon execution will be in full force and effect for a period of not less than 20 years, provided the parties do not mutually agree to terminate the agreement. Sign for the Washington County Board of Education by Dr. Clayton M. Wilcox, Superintendent
Okay, we have a motion which I will ask to re, we'll go back over it, I'm looking for a second to start the discussion, please. Thank you. Okay. Dr. Harding, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. What I've essentially done is take some of the draft that staff has provided, we're essentially keeping this first page, and at the bottom of this first page, there's a heading that says "Letter of Intent." I want to strike everything below that and substitute the language that, that I read aloud. What the language that I've provided says is that this letter represents our intent to negotiate a lease. It identifies the space, it identifies the purpose for which we'd like to lease the space, and it makes clear that we'll only do so if the space that they provide meets our program needs and the, the requirements of our instructional facilities and operations staff. And it says, "We'll only do so if we can meet, reach terms that are mutually agreeable." So if we don't agree with the terms, we don't lease. If they don't agree with the terms, we don't lease. And then it sets out a timeline of 20 years as our expectation for the term of the lease. It's not binding, but I think it certainly lays out our intention to, in good faith, engage in negotiations to lease space from USMH.
Mrs. Fisher?
During an earlier discussion, we considered putting something about Item 5 on the original letter into the new letter. Is that an oversight, or has it now been left out purposely?
I purposely left it out because if we're going to next negotiate a lease--
At that point.
And at that point, when we negotiate the lease, we can add whatever conditions to that lease we want. I don't think those kinds of conditions belong--
In a letter.
--in a letter of intent.
Thank you.
That's my thinking and how I put that language together.
So clarification, this is a first step?
This is a first step. The next step will be to have the-- yes, to negotiate the lease itself.
The sublease.
And if we can't negotiate a lease, then we don't negotiate a lease. If we do, then we and USMH both have the opportunity to put, negotiate into it whatever terms we feel like we need.
Yes, Ms. Fisher.
I'm assuming we will each receive a copy of the new letter of intent when it's typed up?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Reidenauer?
No, I support what Dr. Harding has said. There were a couple provisions that I think are better served in the original. Not that it was poorly constructed or anything, but it was a-- I think they belong in a lease-- in a lease discussion.
Discussion.
Not at this point. We just have a memorandum. Basically, you know, I was going to include just number one.
I thought of that.
You know, because I think that's what we're looking for, and I think that's what they were looking for. They may want more specifics, but, you know, we want to let everybody know that we're interested. We want this to move forward, obviously, but it has to happen in the right sequence.
And I do believe in our joint meeting that we had with the county commissioners, we specifically asked what the next step was, and it was clearly laid out that this was Phase One, Letter of Intent. So I think we're moving on that information that we received in that public joint meeting. All right. Any further discussion? Any clarification needed? I know this is asking you to vote on something you're hearing rather than seeing, but I think it follows the intent we discussed earlier.
And I apologize for that. I only had the few minutes during lunch to--
No. I appreciate your work. I wasn't trying to be critical, trust me. Yes. All right. Need a second? Mrs. Williams? Need a second? Think we have a second?
Oh, I didn't hear.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Dr. Harding spoke to the motion. I was seeing if anyone else had questions or clarification.
Thank you.
I know this is an important step. I want to be sure everyone feels comfortable with whatever their vote's going to be. Okay. All those in favor of the motion as made by Dr. Harding's, please signify. Okay, five-zero, student concurs. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Wilcox brings us on to superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just a couple of items today. And the first one is, I'm going to ask Mr. South to come forward. One of the conditions of accepting a sizable donation and actually developing a partnership in our public-private partnership with the Williamsport Boosters Club was that we get annual reports from them as to their fundraising. And so they have submitted a report to us. And Chris, would you share some of the highlights of that report?
Absolutely. I am pleased to report to you that the boosters at Williamsport High School are honoring the terms of their partnership agreement. They have recently provided us with a report that is required under the partnership agreement, and that report shows that their pledges are coming in as expected. They're making significant progress toward paying back their lender, and they've also reported that they've purchased numerous plaques and other recognitions related to the naming rights of the new facilities. As the report came in, they began the year with a balance of about $43,000, had receipts of about $254,000, expenditures of about $281,000, leaving them with a balance of almost $16,000 to begin their new year. So in summary, it's clear that the athletic boosters at Williamsport High School are continuing to meet their obligations under the private-public partnership agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anything else from the board members? Okay. Then I have just a couple of other things. The first one is, I'm pleased to report to the board that we were successful in completing our negotiations with our bargaining partners, the WCTA. We are awaiting word from them on ratification, and hopefully we'll have that sometime fairly soon. It was an interesting process to go through, and I want to thank everybody for their participation, for their hard work, for their willingness, not just our friends at WCTA, but also members of my staff who participated in that process. I also want to announce to the board that we have started transportation services in the Whispering Hills community. As many of you know, board members, there was a petition presented to you about the service, particularly when the area below the Whispering Hills subdivision flooded in rainy conditions or winter conditions. And so we have taken a careful look at that. We've recalculated the distances that young people were forced to walk in a safe mode going to school, and we thought that adding transportation services in that community was the right thing to do and the responsible thing for the board to do. So we have implemented that effective yesterday, I believe. I also want to report to the board that we're having really very positive comments made about your move to extend the recess period for our young people to 30 minutes a day. The administrators tell me that it's going off with relatively little inconvenience to people and that they're seeing some improved student attention within schools, as some people get the opportunity to run off steam, particularly heartening, as a couple of the high schools have reported that the 10-minute module built into their day is giving students an opportunity to take care of some of the personal issues that arise when you're a young person, and then allow them to refocus and be more in tune with what's going on within the classroom during those times. At some point, we'll ask our student government leader, as well as our student board member, to weigh in on some of that. I don't know that it's all the same for her, but we'll soon find out. I also want to just mention a couple of other little things. We-- just a second. I lost my track of thought. So let me go to the big thing. One of the things that has dominated the news cycle recently is this issue related to our school calendar. Everybody seems to have an opinion on it. People who have children in school, people who don't have, just about anybody who went to school, has something to say about it. I'm going to resist the temptation to take the course that most people are traveling and simply say to this board that I hope that you will allow us, as an administrative team, and I believe that you will, based on some of the personal conversations that we've had, to really take this and look at it not as an edict or a mandate, although it is, but to look at it as an opportunity to change the nature of schooling, to change what we view as the traditional schedule. And so what we're going to do is convene very shortly our calendar committee. We're going to try to give them some guidance as to what we think might make great sense for our teachers, our support staff members, and our students, with our students being at the heart of that. We also want to maximize our investment in the technology that we have purchased for our young people and for our teachers. We think that it may be possible to treat our teachers with a greater degree of professionalism, providing them the time that they are contractually given, but also to perhaps address some of the other concerns that have come up. And again, we're excited about this as an opportunity. We do believe that we can absolutely start after the 5th next year, and we believe that we can wrap school up in the first full week of June as well for not only students but for teachers. Once again, we have a lot of work to do in order to get there, but we think if we take the opportunity to think a little bit differently about what constitutes professional development, what constitutes a full day of school, we can probably get there in a way that is, I think, smart and takes full advantage of the great policies and processes that this school board has put in place over the last three to four years. So again, it's just a bit of an update on where we are. I look forward to discussions. As we talked about earlier today, Mr. Dr. Michael will be sending out invitations to our bargaining partners for representatives on our calendar committee. We'll be reaching out to other teachers within the district to become participants in the calendar committee, as well as members of other support groups and groups within the district. And we'll present that all to the board at our upcoming meeting. So with that, I say thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Always good to hear about possible innovative ideas, taking a challenge and making it better. Personnel. Mrs. Francisco, welcome.
Mrs. Brightman, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. As you discussed earlier in closed session, there are several personnel actions for your consideration and approval today.
A motion, please, on personnel?
Move to accept personnel as previously submitted by staff.
Mr. Reidenauer, second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. All those in favor, please signify. Abstention?
Thank you.
Five-zero, student abstains. Thank you.
Well done.
Report to the board. Ms. Greenwall, would you like to start?
Sure. Student Government meets next Tuesday, September 13th, at Boonsborough High School. Dr. Pugh will be our keynote speaker. She'll be talking about our student I team, the evolution of it, and what our vision is in the partnership with our school system. And then our state director, Mrs. Crawford, will be doing some leadership development.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you. The Finance Committee met on August 30th. The committee heard a report on the end-of-the-year status of the health insurance fund. We were, at that time, made aware that medical and dental expenses are running higher than they have in the past five years, and staff is continuing to keep a watch on that. We also reviewed the FY 2018 budget calendar, and we acted on that this afternoon. We reviewed the FYI 2016 fourth-quarter budget adjustments. We discussed the inclusion of the current 303B vendors, as possibly including them as vendors in the 457B plan. There was something, I think, the board had discussed, having an option of adding, after a year of satisfactory performance, those three vendors if they performed well. And so that's an action that the board can consider at a later date. And we were updated on the status of the FY 2016 independent audit. Seems as though we're experiencing some, I don't know, challenges, let's say, in using the Tyler system. We've made a switch to the Tyler system, and Mr. Brandenburg says that we are on target, and we will have an audit delivered to us on schedule in September. So the accounting department is going to be doing some intense work, but Mr. Brandenburg said we'll be in receipt of that audit on schedule in September. And our next meeting of the Finance Committee will be September 27th at noon in the third-floor conference room.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher.
Policy Committee met August 31st to continue our work on refining policy KB. Based on responses from members of booster groups, we did make a few changes to the policy. We also added two new exhibits, a sample financial report, and a summary of year-end financial reporting procedures. The public has until 5:00 PM on September 26th to continue submitting suggestions and concerns. Our next meeting is September 20th at noon, at which time we will address the concerns and issues that were brought up today, both by board members and those who spoke during citizens' opportunity, as well as any additional comments that come in between now and then. So September 20th at noon.
Thank you. Mr. Reidenauer?
Yes, the Cricket Instruction Committee is scheduled to meet on September 27th.
Thank you. Mr. Gessford, Chair of Facilities, is not with us this afternoon. Dr. Michael, do you know when the next meeting of Facility?
The 27th.
September 27th. Thank you. Okay. Any other committee reports? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to miscellaneous business. We have two items under that. Consideration, Mr. Trotta, vote on opinion and order.
Thank you. Good afternoon. The Board of Education is being requested to consider Order and Opinion 01-2016. Thank you.
Thank you. And a motion for this, please?
Madam President, I move to approve Opinion and Order 01-2016.
Thank you. Dr. Harding, is a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. All those in favor of the motion, please signify. Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. So we have-- it does pass for approval, one opposed and one abstention.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to future agenda items. Mrs. Fisher, you had mentioned earlier you wanted to discuss some recommendations to the Agenda Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. As board members are all aware, various new state commissions are currently being formed to study school construction methods and funding, as well as how state educational funds are allocated to Maryland school systems. As board members, we need to understand these issues and solutions that the groups will be considering, since their proposals could significantly alter general education funding as well as the way we finance and build schools in the future. And for that purpose, I would like to propose the following. I move to have the Agenda Planning Committee schedule updates, workshops, business meeting reports, whatever format is most appropriate, to keep the board apprised of the developments of the Commission on Innovation and Excellence and the Commission on 21st Century School Facilities as they occur.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Everyone understands? Is there a support for this going forward? Please signify. Very good. Thank you. Agenda Committee will take that into consideration. My thought would be initially that there are various scheduled meetings, and maybe right after the state meeting, the next board meeting after that might be an appropriate time to do an update. So we'll try a few different things on and see what works. Thank you. Anything else for future agenda items? Any other recommendations? Okay, that brings us down to board member comments. Mr. Reidenauer?
Nothing today, Ms. Reiden--
Ms. Fisher?
I have nothing today.
Dr. Harding's? Dr. Wilcox?
Nothing.
Mrs. Williams?
Nothing today, thank you.
All right. Very good. I appreciate the meeting and everyone's attention and due diligence, and we are at the end of the agenda, and we are adjourned. Thank you.